Okay. I'd like to get started with the President's Executive Summary. Prior to the meeting tonight, executive session was held to update new counselors and refresh current counselors on any potential litigation matters. No votes were taken during executive session. Next on, we're going to move on to the consent agenda. First item is bills. Are there any comments or questions on the bills? May have a motion to receive and place on file?
Motion to receive and place on file the entire consent agenda.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Seven to zero. Thank you, Ms. Hamilton. The entire consent agenda. Okay, so if we, our next item is, sitting as the Board of License Commissioners, we have a continued here, public hearing, going to transfer the Class BV alcohol license and application for the Newport Beach Club LLC. I believe we received an email requesting-
Postponed until December 10th.
To December 10th, so we would postpone that public hearing as well as the application.
Motion to reschedule the public hearing for the transfer of the Class BV alcohol beverage license for the Newport Beach Club and also the victuals license for the Newport Beach Club till December 10th.
Second.
Second, but just a point of order, were we supposed to convene as the Board of-
No. While he says, "sitting as the Board of License Commissioners."
Is enough to make us convene.
Yes.
Okay, second, your motion.
Motion made second. All those in favor?
Aye.
It's been a request for discussion.
Oh. What was the discussion?
No, I don't. I just-
Oh, okay.
Okay. Motion's been made, second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes seven to zero. So our next item is for victular license for Milk and Honey Kitchen LLC, doing business as Milk and Honey 1016 East Main Road.
Motion to approve.
Second. Motion's been made in second to approve. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes seven to zero. Thank you. And now we have a holiday license for O'Reilly Automotive Stores, Inc., doing business as O'Reilly Auto Parts, 3250 East Main Road.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion made second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes seven to zero.
Motion to adjourn from the Board of License Commissioners. Madam Clerk, we're all set with all the other annual reels.
We still have a few.
We have a-
Oh, okay, for the annuals, okay. Sorry, my bad. Next.
Okay.
Strike that motion.
Okay. We're continuing on with our annual license renewals for liquor license. We have a Class BV Salaces Burrito Grill LLC, 108 Chase Road. We can do all three of these. We have a Class D for the Rhode Island Abbey Golf Club, Inc., at 125 Corey's Lane. And we have a Class J for the Newport Polo, Inc., Glen Farm, Town of Portsmouth property.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion's been made in second.
Quick question. Aye. And it's my fault, I did not look, but the Class J for the Polo list, the specific dates?
Not yet, we don't have the dates yet. So we can grant but not issue.
Pending the dates?
Pending the dates for next season.
Or do you want to-
Without the dates, can we even approve?
You can grant it. He just will not receive it until we get everything we need from him.
Do we then have to vote on the dates?
No. The dates just get entered onto the license. His liquor license is good for only those Saturdays.
But, okay.
Is that okay with that?
Well, that should have come in ahead of time, but, I mean, I'm sure we can all sit here and pick out the Saturdays that they're going to be in the summertime. It's pretty much every Saturday from Memorial Day through the end of September with-
It was a rainy day of Sunday.
Sunday, yeah, okay. Ms. G.
I may have missed, maybe did it and I didn't hear it, but these are hearings, so you should ask any members of the public, want to be heard.
On the license renewals?
On the, yeah, hearing, yeah.
Okay. All right, so are there any comments from any of the butters? I mean, interested parties? Seeing none? Okay, so we have a motion that's been made in second on the three licenses. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes seven to zero. Thank you. And now we're going to move on to the particular licenses, victular licenses for the Rhode Island Abbey Golf Course, 125 Corey's Lane, and Salaces Burrito Grill LLC, 108 Chase Road.
Move to approve both licenses.
Second.
Motion's been made in second. Are there any comments from, I should have asked for this again, are there any comments on? You don't think they can hear me? Are there any comments from any of the, anyone in the audience? None? Okay. Motion's been made in second to approve the victular licenses. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes seven to zero. And finally, we have holiday licenses for Dahlgen Rhode Island LLC, doing business as Dollar General, 3228 East Main Road. We have GE Supply LLC, doing business as Portsmouth Ace Hardware, 3001 East Main Road, and Rhode Island Abbey Golf Club, Inc., at 125 Corey's Lane.
Motion to approve with discussion.
Seconded.
Quick question.
Sure.
When GE Supply moves across the street in two weeks, they're going to have to come back and amend the license and give it back to us? Okay. And I guess this allows them to be open for those two weeks or however long it takes to move across the street.
Yeah, I don't think they have to come, I don't think they have to come back here. We just have to-
Record it.
Reissue the license new.
Okay. Okay. Are there any, before we vote, are there any comments or questions from the audience? None? So we have a motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes seven to zero.
Now, a motion to adjourn as the Board of License Commissioners.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes seven to zero. Okay, so now, there were no minutes for us to review, so our next item will be the tax vouchers. We have tax vouchers 2018-11-2601 to 2018-11-2602.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion's been made second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes seven to zero. And now on to our town administrators' report. Mr. Ray.
Agreeing, Mr. President, Counsel. Ladies and gentlemen, with respect to Defense Highway, also known as Burma Road, there are some road repairs being done by the Navy, so that road is closed from Stringham Road to Green Lane and will be closed until December 14th. Access to Weaver Cove can be gained from Green Lane due to the roadwork occurring in the vicinity of Stringham Road. Roadwork will also occur south of Green Lane on Defense Highway in the vicinity of the firefighting trainer. However, one lane will remain open and flagmen will direct traffic. That's expected to, as I say, finish up December 14th. In response to a letter from the Overlook Point Condominium Development regarding possible construction of a fence on the Navy property line, the Deputy Assistant Secretary of the Navy for Installations and Facilities issued a letter last month essentially stating that the base commander has latitude in deciding the ultimate placement of the fence. The letter was addressed at the last Restoration Advisory Board, the RAB meeting, where it was also disclosed that there is no current fence plan. I will meet with the CO, the commanding officer of the base tomorrow to discuss the implications of the letter and stay engaged in the issue on behalf of the residents of Overlook. With respect to LED, the LED street lighting project, throughout the summer and fall, we have been working on a streetlight conversion invitation to bid. Since last updating the council, we have engaged in a collaborative effort together with four other towns in Rhode Island. The plan is for Middletown, Jamestown, Smithfield, Lincoln, and Portsmouth to issue a joint invitation to bid. The invitation to bid is nearing completion and is currently under review by the legal councils for each of those towns. We hope that this project will get off the ground next year. With regard to Prudence Island and the potable water situation there, in my last update, I referred to an E. coli contamination of the Prudence Water System, and I should have more correctly stated that as coliform infestation. The system has tested positive for the presence of coliform bacteria. As of today, Prudence is still under a boil water order from the Department of Health. The previous three samples I had referred to at the last meeting tested negative for coliform, but the Department of Health has ordered a Level 2 assessment of the water system. A Level 2 assessment is an evaluation made by a certified independent assessor. This will be the fourth assessment conducted over the last three months. Upon completion of the assessment, three more samples will have to be tested before the order is lifted. The Prudence Island Water District will conference with the Department of Health this Friday to review the situation and hopefully agree on a way forward. To date, the Town of Portsmouth has provided residents in need on Prudence with approximately 1,500 gallons of drinking water. With respect to the police building construction, there is no change from the report given by our owner's rep at the last meeting. As our owner's rep, Mr. Zawaski, stated at the last meeting, the construction team will meet this week to develop a forecasted budget to completion listing, which will list any likely expenses that we will need to address prior to the end of this contract. That information will be presented to the council at the December 10th meeting. And, Mr. President, that concludes my report.
Thank you, Ms. Ray. Any questions?
So I think they've identified the source of the coliform contamination on Prudence Island. It's backwash or backflush.
It's assumed that it's people who have winterized their cottages and homes, the snowbirds that have left. They're using compressed air to backflush their plumbing systems, and they think that's where the contamination came from.
Is there, are they studying a way to mitigate that? Otherwise, is it just going to keep happening?
Yes. Mr. Marshall, the Chair of the Prudence Island Water District, is educating people on the proper way to winterize their homes, and we will be talking in the future about the possibility of backflow preventers.
Thank you.
With backflow preventers within each of the homes?
Again, they haven't agreed to this, they don't know this, but this is something I'll be talking to them about. They don't work for me.
Never mind. Moving on. Any further questions? All set, okay. Next, we have resignations and appointments. First, under resignations, from the Conservation Commission, we have Ms. Danielle Abbott.
Mr. President, I move that we accept the resignations of Ms. Danielle Abbott from the Conservation Commission and the Economic Development Committee, and also from the School Committee, Mr. Andrew Kelly and Ms. Terry Portraven. Second.
Motion made in second to accept the resignations.
I'd like to add, to accept their resignations with thanks for their service.
Okay. Motion made in second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes seven to zero. And then we will move on to our appointments. First, we have to the Design Review Board, there's one vacancy, and I believe we have one appointment for-
A motion to appoint Ms. Ladeka to the Design Review Board.
Second.
I believe when she came in, the W was silent.
Yeah. Thank you, Ms. Hamilton. Motion made in second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes seven to zero. Next, we have the Bristol Ferry Town Common, a reappointment of Maureen Kilbasa, Mary Beth Smith, and Ann Bickers.
Move to approve.
Seconded.
Motion made in second for the reappointments. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes seven to zero. Now we have the Glen Manor House, Glen Manor Authority, it would be a reappointment of Ms. Lynn Gallow.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion made in second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes seven to zero. And finally, on the Harbor Commission, we have the reappointment of Robert Drake.
Move to approve.
Seconded.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes seven to zero. Moving on, just give me one second here. Under Old Business, Monthly Finance Report. Ms. Mills.
Honorable Counsel, attached is the budget update for October 2018. This update represents 33 percent of the current fiscal year. Overall revenues are currently at 32 percent, same as last year. Expenditures are at 32 percent of budget projection, slightly lower than last year's 33. There are no significant wire or ACH transfers to report.
Questions from Counsel? Ms. Mills? Where are we with the annual audit?
Right now, we're working on finishing the financials at, basically, the MTA piece that goes to the financials and also is submitted to the state, and we're waiting on the actuaries for the two actuary reports.
No, we're just finishing up the time for the end of year?
No.
Thank you.
Okay.
Any further questions? So I, for a motion, could you-
Motion to receive and place on file.
Seconded.
Motion made second, and all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes seven to zero. And next, we have, under Old Business, a request for a five-year approval of the Glen Farms Special Events Field, application for Beach Dog Lacrosse, Mr. Marshall Huggins, 52, General Sullivan Circle, Portsmouth, for youth lacrosse camps. The dates are July 22nd to 26th of 2019, July 27th to the 31st of 2020, July 26th to the 30th of 2021, July 25th to the 29th of 2022, and July 24th to the 28th of 2023. Is there anyone here to-
Mr. Huggins is here.
Mr. Huggins?
Hello.
Good evening, Mr. Huggins. So, if you could tell us what your plan?
Well, for 10 years, we've had the Beach Dogs Lacrosse Camp, and about four years ago, we moved it to St. George's. And I'd like to move it back. I'd like to bring it back. Of course, it's about 88 to 90 percent Portsmouth residents, so I'd like to bring it back.
And this, the agreement, what you're looking for now, is you've agreed to the cost for 2019, but the fees for 2021, 22?
Yeah, I'd like to primarily just agree for the dates.
Dates, okay.
I think I'm in a video game. I'd like to just agree to the dates, first of all. We had the camp there last year- It's a floor buzzer. And was billed $500 to the camp.
Actually, can we, hold on, can we just, can we close that door?
It's a floor buzzer. Yeah, stripping it back from the floors. I'm actually not sure what that is.
Video games sound any good.
Yeah.
I like my living room. Yeah, so last year, we had the camp, we were charged $500. This year, we put in for the dates again, and again, I know the dates kind of, I mean, the costs may change. I'm just looking to lock down the dates so we can open registration, so families can start to plan their summers out.
Motion to approve the rental dates of July 22nd to 26th, 2019, July 27th, 31st, 2020, July 26th to 30th, 2021, July 25th to 29th, 2022, and July 24th to the 28th of 2023 for the Beach Dogs Lacrosse Camps.
This motion's been made. Are there second, any?
I'd like to amend that motion.
I'll second, but I have a question.
Okay.
My only reluctance is, is it common for us to tie up dates five years in advance?
We do it with the Beast of the East. They've had it for five years.
We have done these long-term planning ones for, for Beast of the East in the past.
It just helps for us, I mean, I can't say for Beast of the East, but just lock down the dates and let people know and plan accordingly in case we have to find another location.
So we're locking in the dates, and the fees are subject to change if the fees go up in the future?
That's my understanding, yes.
Okay.
You know, I know, I know fees change for different fields and things like that, so I'm more, most important is I just get the dates down.
Okay. Ms. Juizy?
I'm just concerned that even though we have been doing these long-term contracts in the past, that we may want to rethink our policies about usage of the fields and prices and whatnot. And I'm just, I looked at your website, and I'm just curious, it seemed aimed more at folks from out of town coming to visit. That seemed to be the pitch.
Why would it be that?
Because of the ads that, when I went on your website and looked at your videos, they were mainly saying Newport is a great place to visit with your family, and you said, you yourself are speaking, said that most of the, that it is a camp that attracts people from all over the country.
Yeah, well, I'm absolutely trying to grow it. The reality of it is, we have, like I said, upper 80 percent are Portsmouth residents. We bring in Harlem Lacrosse at no cost, obviously from New York. We bring in Wampanoag Mashpee's from Massachusetts at no cost, and we give scholarships to every town that has a lacrosse program to come, so there's a number that don't, aren't from Portsmouth. So I'm trying to grow it. The reality of it is, it's a day camp, we don't provide housing, and it's, and I love it. I started Portsmouth Youth Lacrosse, you know, 15 years ago, 18 years ago.
I guess I'm just looking at it from the perspective of it being a town property that should be serving town residents primarily, and I appreciate that you have a business that serves underserved populations. However, it just seems that, you know, town property should not be used for for-profit organizations to benefit folks that are not Portsmouth residents. I mean, that should be our priority, to benefit Portsmouth residents.
I agree.
And so I guess I was concerned that your pitch on your online was to attract people from all over the country, because that contradicts the notion that people would be primarily Portsmouth people benefiting. Secondly, I am not sure that locking the facility, I understand how it's beneficial to lock it in for your, from your perspective, I'm not, since I represent the town, I'd like the town's interests protected, and especially because we haven't had a full-time Parks and Recreation Director to really be able to look at the way our fields are being used and the prices that are being charged. I'd like to be able to have the opportunity to do that analysis, and if we lock you in for five years, it's just another piece that we're not able to move. And so I would, I would like to amend the motion to, and also, the $500 fee, that you understand has definitely changed, it's gone up quite significantly.
That's fine, I didn't ask for that fee, that's what I was billed.
Okay, so I guess I would like to amend the motion to just be-
Can I comment on your comment?
Sure, sure.
First of all, we're well in the majority of Portsmouth kids at this camp, you know, over 80 percent, probably over 90 percent. And, you know, we, the people who run this camp and who run Portsmouth Youth Lacrosse do more for those fields than the town. You know, we fertilize them and seed them every year. So, just to let you know, that, I mean, I very much feel like you, and I'm not looking for the cost, I know those could change, I'm just looking to reserve the dates like you've done for the Beast of the East, which is not at Portsmouth, doesn't serve the Portsmouth majority in any way.
Understood. I'm just saying that I'd like, I guess I'd like to amend the motion to just give our new council a chance to review field usage and other pricing for various events, and so I would amend the motion to allow this license to go forward for a year.
I'll second that amended, motion to amend.
Good discussion on that?
Yep.
So we have a, an organization that primarily serves the youth of Portsmouth looking to solidify dates so they don't have to leave town again, that serves residents here in town, and we're going to lock them out, or potentially lock them out, to do a study that we could do anyways and just avoid these, these weeks for the next four years. It would be four years, because you heard, you're agreeing to the one year. I see that short-sighted. We've done it with the Beast of the East. We can do things, we can walk and chew gum, we can do an analysis and lock up the dates and have it rented for those weeks, or we can chase organizations away and say, "We don't want you," which is, I think, what we're looking to do.
I'd also like to add, this, I sent this request in, in July, okay? I sent it again in September. I sent it again, no, I sent it again in October and August, so it was July, August, October. And now, I'm here, this is the first I've heard of you being here. So I tried to get ahead of this, I tried to get there, you guys can analyze things, I didn't know you're going from last town council to new town council. I just want the dates, you know, it's, I can comment on the costs, I'm happy to advise you on that, because I rent fields in different places, I just need to know the dates primarily.
If I may, Mr. President.
Yeah.
I apologize on behalf of Portsmouth that you've had to wait so long to come before us. We are a new council, and we have yet to really address, which I'm sure we will, what will be our priorities. And my concern, why I seconded the amended, the motion to amend, is that before we have had a chance to really discuss in public what our priorities are, what we may have set for our priorities for our town properties, we're locking up five years. Granted, it's only one week every five years, but it's still a long-range obligation before we've had a chance to discuss among ourselves what else we might want. Now, I appreciate your wanting to lock down dates.
Well, it's just that I come up here every year or send in paperwork every year, maybe three years, I mean-
Fair enough. I'd ask you to just bear with us.
Yeah, no, I-
This year, as a largely new council has taken our seats, to give us time to assess what our priorities are and how we intend to manage town properties on behalf of every resident of the town, which includes the population you serve.
No, I understand.
Can I?
Ms. Hamilton?
Both my kids have played Portsmouth Youth Lacrosse, and I really appreciate the program. You guys run a really nice program. I don't foresee any situation where our town wouldn't want to welcome your program on our properties. Would you be okay with a two-year agreement, or you want five years?
No, I'd be okay. I want it to work as well. I'm happy with two years or three years, but I would love to lock down five years, so maybe after you guys are able to analyze it. And I have a lot of comments on that. I mean, it's similar to, and if you guys don't approve every camper that comes in the campground, you know, or every horse that's in the stables. So I'd love to lock it down so I don't have to come here, and then the dates can be billed through the rec department as you or they do.
I mean, personally, I think, I'm okay with the, with the five years as presented. I mean, this is something that, it gives us some certainty with the dates. I do like the idea of the ability to adjust the fee schedule, because that has been something, and I know we went through this a few years ago, you do spend a lot of money, you know, maintaining the fields, as do the soccer folks and the baseball folks, so-
But we can separate that, Matt.
No, understood. And, no, I'm just, of the standpoint of, I know where you're going from a planning perspective. In youth sports, people like to, you know, have some certainties where their tournaments are going to be every year, so I get where you're looking for. I mean, I'm okay with the five-year. It seems like there might be a consensus to maybe go to a two or a three-year, so I, I'm good with the five, but I'd like to make sure that it's more than one right now so that you have some certainty moving forward. Can we compromise here and at least give them three?
If Ms. Juizy Fujia, Mr. President, might revise your motion.
I'll revise my motion to two years. I'll just add that, certainly not just addressing you, but my concern, looking at all the folks that are using town properties, is that we don't know, it's really, we don't have evidence of exactly how many folks are, Portsmouth residents are being served, we don't know how much profit's being made, and it just seems like, I'm not sure that we are properly setting prices for use of town properties, and that's certainly not just in your case, but across the board. I just feel that if people are using town property to run private businesses, that the town has a right to a lot more information than we have, so that's kind of just a general concern of mine, but I will go ahead and amend the motion for two years.
I will say, the fields at your current price rate are the most expensive in, on Clifford Island.
That is not my understanding, as I've spoken to some other folks, but- That is not my understanding, as I've spoken to some other folks, but that being said, I amend the motion.
Well, you have to take into consideration, we, you know, when I do a camp there, I have to get a tent that's over a thousand dollars, porta potties over a thousand dollars, my own security if I need it.
And, right, but...
So there's nothing, so when you look at, I'll put it up, the St. Georges, you're more expensive than the St. Georges, which is a facility, not a field.
And, but I also noticed, like, certain missing information, like that you all serve lunch, and also, I think you had an Iroquois stick maker, and I'm just wondering, were there, were there peddler's licenses that needed to be done in those cases?
Flatways has a peddler's license and they're not selling sticks.
Okay. And lunch is, who's being provided by Flatways, you're saying?
Yeah, they have a peddler's license.
Yeah, okay. I amend the motion for two...
And actually, also, I think Dell's comes and they have a peddler's license and the frozen snow cone guy comes and he has a peddler's license.
I get, I get in a second, the amended...
So we have a motion?
A motion and a second for a two-year approval, and we can adjust it, you know, in the future, but at now, it's a two-year approval.
Yeah, that's fine. I'm happy with that.
Okay.
And I'll just work with the rec director on what it will cost, I guess.
Thank you, seconds. Any further comments before we vote? Okay. So we have a motion and a second for the two-year approval. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you.
Motion passes seven to zero. Thank you. Onto new business number one. To request council approval of Vision appraisal for statistical reappraisal services for 1231 2019 reevaluation. Mr. Helfman?
Good evening, everyone. This state mandated a revaluation. As you can see in the backup, there were three bids, two that were relatively close and one which was otherworldly. But Vision's done the last seven rebalts for us. Their staff is very consistent and they're familiar with the area and feel confident they'll continue to do a good job. The one additional item I am requesting is, Vision's bid came in about eight thousand dollars less than the maximum that we get reimbursed from the state. So I was kind of hoping we could use that extra eight thousand dollars in savings to apply them to update the pictures in the town. The last time it was done was 1997. And this way, we're maximizing, we're getting, that cost, sixty percent of it is being borne by the state. So I think we'd be maximizing our dollars if we would do it that way.
Okay. So what's the final contract number you want for Vision?
It would be...
You want the 107-580?
107-500, probably.
You have 580 here. You want 580 or 500?
580 would be the maximum.
Okay. A motion to approve Vision appraisal and a contract for the revaluation and picture update for one hundred thousand, five hundred dollars.
Second.
One hundred and seven thousand, five hundred dollars.
Five eighty.
Sorry. One hundred and seven thousand, five hundred dollars.
Second.
Okay. But we have some comments? Yeah. Mr. Shears?
As an appraiser for over thirty years, Vision appraisal and their explanations and their database is second to none. So they are the best by far. So you're getting the best for your money.
Okay. And just one, this, this item, or this, for this year, though, for this fiscal year, the cost of the town is?
One hundred and seven thousand, five hundred dollars.
The way the billing works, it's, as they go, if we're to, it isn't exact, but half of it's gonna be this fiscal year and half will be next fiscal year.
Okay. Where are we with the, the state looked at doing a five-year or ten-year recycle revaluation plan? It started two years ago. It didn't seem to see the light of day last year.
It didn't. And now the talk is that they wanna go, there are some people that want to go to the Massachusetts model, which is updating every year.
Whoa.
So, we'll see what happens.
More unfunded mandates.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, so we have a...
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Helf. So we have a motion and a second to approve the request. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes seven to zero.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. New business number two. We have a request approval of the 2019 transfer station sticker fee. Mr. Woodhead, Mr. Rayner?
Mr. Rayner.
Trash talk. Here we go. Here we go.
Brian will address it, but the amount, or the spreadsheet that was included in the backup had to be modified today. There was an error. So he will address that, but the sticker price will be a few dollars less, the proposed sticker price would actually be a few dollars less. So Brian, if you'll just walk him through the spreadsheet.
Sure. Council President, members of the council, I'll walk you through the spreadsheet. I'll just highlight a few things. It's been broken down into cost per bids, other expenses, round resource recovery tipping fees, and then revenues and credits. And then the last section is the shortages of this year's cost. So there's, we'll start with the bid, cost per bid. Nothing's really changed on this. It's all pretty much stayed flat. The transfer station operations, the second monitor, the solid waste, we're anticipating about the same amount of solid waste from recycling collection. The C and D, we brought that down because of the rule change from our last council meeting that we're gonna do with the four passes per, for C and D. So we brought that down a little bit. Yard waste is pretty much staying the same at six fifteen. And then the ABC, so you can see the total cost just for the bid cost is five hundred fifty-seven thousand, three thirty-seven, fifty-two. Then we go down to the other expenses. That's gonna be for, for the new compact, we have a seven-year bond. The debt service for the building, that's gonna be for that cost. The gate attendings, the general maintenance, the general maintenance, we increased to twenty thousand, five ninety-seven, because the lighting down below, what the trailers into, every time you put the compact on, the lights go out. So it has to be, it's getting shorted somewhere in the electrical system, so we had to upgrade that. And then also, too, the rubber roof on that membrane up top is beyond its useful life. It's leaking all over the place. So I already got estimates for that, and that's why we put in the twenty thousand, five ninety-seven for the lower section. DEM fees is a thousand dollars, that's per year. We pay every three years, we pay three thousand dollars for every three years, so it's a thousand dollars a year. The utilities is pretty much staying the same. Recycling coordinators fee, the program expenses, recycle bins, training, tires, mattresses, oil disposal, and the printing of the stickers, that comes out to one hundred fifty-nine thousand, two thirty-four, eighty-seven. Then our next section is the tipping fees. So the problem with the tipping fees is, round resource recovery will not give us a price, but it's gonna be come July 1st. So right now, we have six months, and we're, we're still in a contract for forty-seven dollars per ton. We're anticipating a ten percent increase. So we, so we cut it in half, put nine hundred and thirty tons of trash and C, well, nine hundred and thirty tons of trash at the forty-seven dollars per ton, then we increase it to ten percent to fifty-one, seventy for nine hundred and thirty tons. And then the same with the C and D, because that's the same price. So we increased that one hundred fifty to, and one hundred fifty from forty-seven to fifty-one, seventy. Then the ABC is so small, it's only forty-seven tons, we kept that seven oh five. So then we are, so then it comes out to a grand total of eight hundred and twenty-three thousand, eight seventy-three, thirty-nine. That's for the big costs, other expenses and tipping fees. So now we come to the revenues and the credits, scrap metals, the whole, the scrap metals, the propane tanks, the redeits for round resource for the tipping fees, C and D disposal, we're thinking we're gonna collect about sixty passes, extra on top of the four that we're gonna give up for household, tire disposal, mattresses, planet aid, the one-week passes, and the estimated annual buy-sale revenue, two hundred and eighty-two thousand. So we have three hundred and fourteen thousand dollars, forty dollars in credits. So we took that away from the eight hundred and twenty-three thousand, and we came up with five hundred and nine thousand, eight thirty-three, thirty-nine. It has to be funded through the enterprise, so for three thousand residents. And that comes out of the sticker cost of one hundred sixty-nine, one hundred sixty-nine dollars, ninety-four cents. But there was only one problem. This year's sticker price, we anticipated thirty-five hundred residents, and the problem was, we only sold three thousand, forty-six stickers. So we have a little bit of a shortfall. And this is where, where it got changed a little bit, but, so I'll break this down. So the estimated hauling and tipping expenses stayed the same at one seventy-five, five ninety-eight. Operation costs, the four thirty-three, two oh nine. And then the other expenses, it was at one fifty-nine, two thirty-four, eighty-seven. But the problem was, the lighting and the roof was added into that, and I had to take that out, we only spent one thousand, one hundred and seventy-eight dollars for mains to go for this year. So I had to add that back in. So that was the biggest change on that part of expenses. Then we had the sticker sales for only three thousand, forty-six households, so four thirty-six. And then the estimated background of two fifty-three, oh thirty-one. And then we added in the credits, thirty-two thousand, forty. So we took the seven twenty-one, nine fifty-four, minus it out of the seven forty, forty-eight, nine, six nineteen, thirty-five, and we have a shortfall of twenty-six thousand, six sixty-five, thirty-five. So when you take the, the anticipated sticker cost for 2019 to the one sixty-nine, ninety-four, then you add in the shortfall, comes out to eight thousand, eighty-nine cents for three thousand residents. So the new sticker fee is gonna be one seventy-eight, one hundred and seventy-eight thousand, eighty-three cents. And then the next one down, we just broke it down a little bit further, for a monthly sticker cost. So a monthly sticker cost would be fourteen dollars and ninety cents. And if you get one large bag per month for eight dollars, so average cost for a household per month is twenty-two dollars and ninety cents. So if anyone has any questions, try to answer them.
I just want to add, that the ten percent increase in the tipping fee, we reached out to a number of haulers, they're anticipating a ten percent increase. That's the best data we have. RYREC won't release that number until late in December, but that's too late for us to set our sticker. So we're going by what the haulers are estimating.
So if we were using round numbers, are we gonna say that the sticker fee is one hundred and eighty?
Correct.
Hundred and eighty dollars for the sticker fee.
Is there any chance that RYREC is gonna raise the price even more than that?
They raised it for last year and this year, I think we have a better idea, but I don't know. We, this, this made ten percent. That's a huge, huge difference.
We have to read the key to the debate projection, and there is a very, we have to take off...
Just hold on. I know, I know who you are, Ted, but if we're gonna speak, just so that the secretary can, the clerk can get everybody who's speaking. That's all. So is there any further questions for Mr. Woodhead? Mr. Kelly, did you have a question? Okay. Mr. Fitzmaurice or Ted, whoever, jump up.
Thank you, Mr. President. Larry Fitzmaurice, Fifty Kristen Court. I'd like to ask, is under the cost for the contractor, second line down, is eighty-five thousand for one employee, I guess? Is that a new employee? I think it is.
No, under the contract, that was the additional employee that was required to be hired under the contract. So that, that is the cost, that is a, they're not Patriot anymore, but that is a company employee, not a town employee.
I understand, yeah. This is new in this, in this chart?
No, that was incorporated in the last sticker price as well, at the beginning of the contract.
It does say, okay, understand.
Just ignore it.
I also note, as Mr. Woodhead did, that the cost estimate was based on a projection of the number of people who would buy stickers. Shouldn't we be estimating a further decline in the number of people that buy stickers if we raise the price? I would expect that.
Well, we thought about that as well. We saw a significant drop in the number of people over the last two years. Almost a thousand people dropped out. We think we've hit a floor, because when we talked to the waste haulers, the waste haulers are gonna increase their prices in January. So all the prices are gonna go up, whether you buy a sticker or you go to the hauler. Right now, the cheapest hauler is about thirty-five dollars. It comes out to about thirty-five dollars a month. They're gonna go to about thirty-seven, fifty a month. We're looking at the, even, including the price of a bag, we're still at twenty-two, ninety. So we're still significantly lower than the cheapest hauler.
Mr. Rayner, it's my understanding that all of this stuff ends up at the Johnston landfill anyway and goes through the same charge process for tipping fees. Is that correct? Whether it's a, whether it's a hauler or whether it's out of the transfer station.
That's an overgeneralization, but yes, I mean, all the trash goes to Johnston. And you do have to pay a tipping fee. You pay a tipping fee on C and D, you pay a tipping fee on ABC, you pay a tipping fee on trash. You do not pay a tipping fee on recycling.
Isn't that assuming that the hauler takes it to Johnston?
Well...
They're not mandated, like Republic takes it to Fall River, don't they?
No, our, because, we explained this last year. We have two contracts. We have a contract with RYREC, we have a...
Not us. A hauler in town does not, is not mandated to take their trash to Johnston. They could have a contract, they can come into Portsmouth, do a truck and take it to the private hall.
That's correct. For instance, Lawrence takes, at the last, we talked to Lawrence, Lawrence takes theirs out of state, Massachusetts. But because we have a contract with RYREC, we're required to take our, our trash, town trash, from our land, from our transfer station to the Johnston landfill.
Mr. Hamilton's point might be that if you were a private hauler collecting trash in Portsmouth that took it to Massachusetts, would you be paying potentially lower fees and could charge less than we're paying? And we're charging.
I was trying to answer Mr. Fitzmaurice's question, which I think was, do the haulers taking the stuff to Johnston pay the same tipping fee we do? But haulers in town may not take their stuff to Johnston.
My understanding is...
There's only one that we've determined is not taking it to Johnston. They're all around the same price. As a matter of fact, they're looking to take some of our cap, because they have so much trash. It's, it's big business. But they're all paying about the same price. I can't speak to what the tipping fee would be in Massachusetts, but I know that the prices are going up all over the country. The, and one of the drivers, we may be in a situation here in the near future where we have to address recycling, because recycling has gone up so much, not just in Rhode Island, but throughout the country. And all that recycling used to go to China. China is no longer accepting the majority of the recycling that was sent to them, because it has to be clean recycling now. So that is upping the prices. We just don't know what it's going to be. We took our best estimate. We looked at ten percent increase. RYREC won't release it. They said at the earliest at the, until the end of December, but we've gotta set a sticker price now. So we're, we figure we're pretty safe. We've talked to the haulers. The haulers are anticipating ten percent. So that's what we factored into ours.
All right. Thank you, sir. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fitzmaurice.
Mr. President, I make a motion that we set the sticker rate at one hundred and eighty dollars for the next year. That would include the waste construction, C and D.
Which would be the, the four tab system, so to speak?
Yeah, yes.
Four tab system. Four, everybody would get four dumps of their toilet, shingles, window, whatever they happen to throw out. Second. Motion made, second, to set the sticker fee for 2019 at a hundred and eighty dollars. All those in favor?
Aye.
I figured you'd ask for more discussion if there wasn't.
Oh, well, it was seconded. Was there any second for discussion?
Well, it's been seconded. If there's any discussion, I'd merely like to say that we have tasked our administration with running an operation that covers its cost, and they have presented to us with the plan to do that, so...
Okay. So we have a motion and a second. So we have a motion and a second to set the sticker fee at a hundred and eighty. I'll get it right. Bear with me, folks. I'm new at this. Motion's been made in second for the hundred and eighty dollar sticker fee. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes.
Thank you, Mr. President. If I may, I just, I see Ted standing there. This was a collaborative effort between the town, staff, and the Solid Waste and Recycling Committee, and I just want to say thank you, Ted, for all the work you put in this.
Also, two council president, had you had copies up there if anyone needs a copy of it?
Because it was a little bit different than what was in the package. It was actually better. Can you get that to the clerk so she can update it? Thank you.
Okay. Moving on to new business number three. It's a request Solid Waste and Recycling Committee work with staff to study the feasibility of funding the transfer station through the general fund and investigate options for an enterprise fund program for curbside pickup to meet the waste disposal needs of the greater number of Portsmouth households. Ms. Abbott?
Well, I confess, the last thing I wanted to do in my first meeting as a town councillor was vote for a thirty percent increase on transfer station stickers, but I understand the realities facing us and what we have to do. That said, we just increased the stickers thirty percent. I would expect a few more people to drop out from that three thousand number. Maybe I'm wrong. You guys have been doing this longer than I have. But that said, there's about, there's over seven thousand households in Portsmouth, and we're only selling three thousand stickers. I think that clearly shows that over half of our households are either, you know, paying for private pickup at their home, dumping at work, sharing a sticker with family, all a whole host of different options. The numbers that I have in my memo are very rough ballpark numbers, but looking at the sheet in front of me, roughly seven hundred and twenty thousand dollars to operate the transfer station. Four hundred and thirty-six thousand of it is from sticker sales. Then you add the credits and the bag revenues on top of that. I would like to task the Solid Waste Committee with investigating the pros and cons of rolling that four hundred and thirty-six thousand back into our tax rolls that equates to about a zero point seven percent increase in our taxes. And I think as a, as one of our basic mandatory town services, that's how it should be funded. Maybe it won't be, but I would like you guys to come back to us with a proposal to at least consider that when we are looking at the budget as a whole. I'd like to consider it within the context of the whole budget as an option. On top of that, we do operate the transfer station as an enterprise fund, which means it pays for itself. I got some numbers from Ted earlier this week, and our bids for curbside pickup last year for the haulers that bid on our town contract would have equated to about twenty-three dollars a month per household. As Mr. Rayner said, private customers are currently paying thirty-five dollars a month. That's a big change from what we were paying before, because I know customers that were paying up to seventy-five dollars a month. I would like, in addition to my previous request, to look at an option for creating an enterprise fund for the, a couple thousand households in our town that do contract for private pickup and give more of our households a better option for our waste disposal. So, yeah, that's pretty much it.
Tasking the solid waste.
Take it away.
I think maybe we should.
We actually, so Ms. Abbott did speak at the Private Citizen this time last year about this idea, and the committee did have a pretty candid discussion at a meeting in November two thousand and seventeen, that's on the minute. And I did generate a spreadsheet. I'd be happy to go through it. We don't have a meeting in December, but we would have a meeting in January. I don't know if that's fast enough for you. Just take that into consideration. There is nothing to stop you from putting out a RFP if you want to do a thousand, fifteen-hundred, two thousand, twenty-five hundred household. And we have the language from when we did it in September two thousand and seventeen. So there's no reason why you can't feel out the marketplace. And if we don't like what we see, we don't have to do anything. But I don't think there's any reason trying to explore how to lower prices in the town of Portsmouth.
Thank you.
Mr. President, may I ask a question of the town administrator?
Sure.
How long do you think, how long do you think that this study would take you and the, it's always, you and your staff and the Solid Waste Recycling Committee?
I don't know. I don't know. I mean, this is a, there's a lot here, and there's a lot here. And it's two parts. One is to take the transfer station and put it into the general tax roll. Obviously, that could be done pretty quick. There's a cost associated with that. This is a million dollar enterprise, all right? So that means if we put that into the budget and sold that into the tax roll in this next budget, we're not going to do anything else next year. Nothing. We're going to go right to the cap. Boom. All right? So we're going to have to phase that in if that's what you want to do. That's one. Two, I think what I'm hearing is that you want to have the Portsmouth transfer station open, and it would be funded by taxpayers, which means that all residents now can use the transfer station. We would have to figure out a way, one, to regulate that. We heard loud and clear all last year, we don't have a transfer station problem, we got a management problem. We're going to go right back to a management problem. I mean, the whole reason we instituted the C and D rules was to get rid of the pickup trucks with the stakes on the side and bringing in ten tons of C and D. So that's a management problem that could be easily solved, but you have to remember that this is a transfer station that was built in nineteen seventy-two for nine thousand people total in Portsmouth. We're double that size now. So we're going to place an increased burden on a transfer station that is too small for the town that it serves. Add that to the fact that you're asking us to study making curbside pickup an enterprise fund. There are second and third order effects that would have to be addressed here. To make curbside pickup a viable enterprise fund, we would have to exclude all other haulers. We would have to accept only one hauler in town, because the other haulers are immediately going to undercut everybody. If you remember, when we set the sticker price last year, almost all of December, and early part of January, MTG was putting out full-page ads addressed specifically to Portsmouth in the paper. That's going to happen again. So, okay, so we would have to institute an ordinance, and I would have to defer to the solicitor for a study, is that even legal? And then to get, we dealt with this from March, if you remember, from March to December last year, our life revolved around the transfer station and trash talk, where we'll get right back in it, and I'm perfectly happy to do this. But one of the biggest problems we had to surmount last year in discussing this issue is every hauler wants you to tell them, how many residents am I going to serve? Because they have to figure out what their price is going to be. So I can't, I can't say we think we'll have this many people, because we have this many X number of people already in curbside pickup. They have contracts. And well, maybe there's something legally could be done that makes them go to whoever the authorized trash hauler is. But will they still want to have curbside pickup and pay for that if my taxes, their taxes, are already paying for the transfer station? And while numerically, we could do this study next week, there are a lot of border issues that will have to be vetted and studied that are going to take time to make sure we get it right. Because if we don't get this right, we're going to be in a mess. And I don't want to put the town in that situation. So this is going to take a little while. I think it's a great study. We ought to look at it. It was clear last year, the town was fairly evenly divided in what they wanted, so let's address it. But let's make sure that we put the right thought into it and have the right data. This is, this is not something we're going to be able to solve overnight. I think we're going to need a lot of time on this.
Go ahead. No, I agree that this is not a problem that we're going to solve overnight. But when we're faced with a thirty percent increase and a solution that doesn't meet the needs of our community, I think we need to make an effort to try to come up with more creative solutions to address those issues. Perhaps we can do different phases. The enterprise fund for the curbside might actually reduce the demand on the transfer station even more, and that might give us, paint a clearer picture of what we would be dealing with were we to put the transfer station back in the tax rolls. So these are all things that I think probably need to be discussed and quantified, and we need to, you know, hash it all out and see what the best path forward would be. But when I see a number for our town where it would be the same cost for somebody to get curbside pickup or the transfer station, why don't we give our residents that option? So it's apples for apples, and people can pick the thing that meets the needs of their family.
I agree. I agree, but it's not apples to apples. If you're going to put the transfer station in a tax base, that means we're all paying for it, we all get to use it. So you're going to have something that's free, i.e., in my taxes, I'm paying for it, I ought to have the right to use it compared to, and I can get curbside if I want, but I got to buy a sticker for it.
Yeah, but anybody using the transfer station would still be using the bags for their waste. You could do things like make the seventy dollars for each mattress, the people that, you know, you pay those seventy dollars if you're going to dispose of a mattress. There's, you know, extraneous things that are included in a sticker price that don't necessarily have to be included, but other towns have different models. You go to, you know, there's other towns in the vicinity that have curbside pickup and have a transfer station to accept larger items at a fee. So we could look at a, you know, a blended model, shall we say, that takes different things. Have to try to even it out.
Happy to work on it. Absolutely happy to work on it. I think it's an interesting challenge. It's a great, it's a great intellectual problem to pursue. However, the rubber's got to hit the road at some point.
I challenge you, Mr. Ray.
And I accept it. But I just, again, there are things, we need to study it. I mean, we haven't, what we heard loud and clear from the vendors last year, because we have gone down this road. We did, in our studies last year, ask each vendor, we gave them options, and a lot of people forget the first RFP we put out. We did exactly that. We asked the vendors to operate the transfer station and do curbside pickup. Nobody was interested in that, and the numbers were through the roof. We had to reject that RFP because it was just not, we just couldn't afford it. The reason why is because the transfer station is too small. So then we went the second route. Well, what if we just operate the transfer station intermittently and allow for what you said? Didn't fit into their business model, it was very expensive, and not all the haulers were, none of the haulers were interested in that model. So maybe with further study, we can come back to the council with some ideas. I would just ask that we have the latitude to kind of think outside the box and not just limit ourselves to those two options. Maybe there's something else that we haven't thought of.
I mean, we're locked into a contract for the transfer station for two more years, correct?
We're locked in for two more years, and Brian, correct me if I'm wrong, I think there's five one-year options on that. Two, two.
Yeah, so that aside, I, you know, I know there's at least five different haulers operating in Portsmouth right now that probably would want to bid on a curbside-only contract. They maybe didn't want, you know.
I know that for a fact. We had four.
Yeah.
So, I mean, it is, but again, they want to know, the hardest nut to crack was, they want to know how many residents we're going to guarantee them. And if we don't hit that, we got to pay the difference.
And I feel like Congressman was saying too, when we had the briefcase conference for curbside pickup and transfer station, that was the biggest question, like, how do you break out four thousand residents? Either through the whole town or you don't do anybody. You should do the whole town. It's very hard to break out different people on different things, because like Ms. Abbott said, you're going to have to breed and trust rather than having a roof. You know what I mean? They're going to take it off, and then, oh no, we don't want to do that one people. You know, like, either through the whole town or go through anybody at all else. Now, with the briefing we did last year.
And we did go through this exercise a lot when we were vetting it last year. I mean, I think it's a good idea to defer this to the Recycling Committee if they're up for the task. We do have some time, because we are still under contract for two years. We should be able to come up with a very good solution, because I think we all agree that if we start to lose more and more people participating in the sticker, then it's just not going to be in our best interest to try to keep the transfer station open. So I think we've got a bit of a window here. I'd like to see us move forward with the Recycling Committee.
It is a short, my name is President. It's a short window in that I think we can anticipate tipping fees increasing every year, and therefore, sales of stickers falling off every year. And I don't believe, this is my personal opinion based on everything I've heard over many years in this town, that the transfer station is sustainable long-term. Sooner or later, that now forty-year-old facility won't be worth the cost. We're not there yet, but I think it's wise to kick off an investigation of how we can transition to a newer model.
Agreed. It's, we're going to try to get ahead of it. To me, the biggest issue is if we want to, if we're going to go to the taxpayers paying for, we put it, putting it back into tax rolls, it's got to be a program for everybody. It can't be half and half, three quarters of one half. It's got to be the same program for everybody, but it's not something you can put in the tax rolls once. It has to be phased in over the course of three, four, five, six years. Because just looking at a bare number, if you look at Barrington as a comparable-sized town, they spend about one point three million dollars on their trash refuge and they have pickup. So you got to be looking at putting that number back into a budget. And our increase each year is about one point seven. So figure on not doing anything else if you're going to throw it all back in the budget one year.
This is a request to study, and I would support a motion when Ms. Abbott makes it.
I think we have one more comment here.
Just quickly, one thing that you are forgetting, because last year, we also went to paper throw. That, I think, may have been a major cause of the reduction of people using the transfer station. You do not have to use paper throw with curbside pickup. There was a lot of resistance to paper throw in this town prior to putting it in. And I think that may have had a large effect on the, on the numbers that we saw go down last year.
It's possible, but I think at this point, we've got a motion, we're going to kick it over to the Recycling Committee, and let's see what they can.
No motion yet.
There wasn't, all right. We're heading towards a motion.
I will add that Waste Management has about nine hundred customers in our town, and MEGA Disposal has about six hundred customers in our town. So one idea that Ted and I discussed was maybe looking at, you know, you could set sticker prices based on the lowest number of customers, and, because I think this is how their bids last year were priced, were by every five hundred additional customers, that changed the cost. So there's creative ways for us to look at it to cover our, anyway.
All right.
To make sure we don't tell.
Wait, just one thing, though. I agree with what Mr. Hamilton said. It might be that we have to choose to do a hundred percent of the town doing one option. So I just want to clarify that this study is not going to only look at a hybrid system where some people do trash pickup and some people do transfer station. This study is also going to look at what will happen if we went to all pickup or all transfer. Is that correct?
Well, sure, yes. It depends on the study. And the study might also say that suggests that we do nothing until the contract with the transfer station expires, in which case, there's nothing stopping us from an enterprise zone for our curbside pickup and not touching the transfer station. These are all ideas, I think, that need to be hashed out.
Okay. As long as it's not only looking at the hy, maintaining a hybrid, that it looks like, you know, the hundred percent either option.
So I'm going to make two motions.
One at a time.
One at a time. I would like to make a motion to task our Solid Waste and Recycling Committee with investigating options for rolling our waste disposal needs back into our tax rolls. I don't think I need to specify any further, do I? Okay. Second.
Okay, so motion's made in second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes seven to zero. Second motion?
The second motion would be to also have our Solid Waste and Recycling Committee look into an RFP for an enterprise zone program for a curbside pickup, so that residents that choose to use curbside pickup can have a better rate than private contracts.
Just a correction, enterprise fund.
Enterprise fund.
And hybrid models, I guess.
And...
Isn't that part of the first study?
What you're asking the town to do, I think, is to contract, or ask for an RFP, a contract, and have an enterprise fund where residents could pay into to hopefully have a size ability to get a lower rate.
Correct.
Okay. So you're asking for the town to put out an RFP to say, we are RFPing for a curbside pickup...
For Portsmouth residents.
For Portsmouth residents, without pay-as-you-throw, without anything else, just, we want a contract to see what the rate is, to see if somebody comes back in, as opposed to the $35, I think it is now with MEGA.
Yep.
And maybe they come back in at 29? Is that what your thought is?
Well, much like they did last year, you could probably look at pay-as-you-throw and not pay-as-you-throw options.
Okay.
But, yes.
So you're essentially asking for the town to set up an RFP to see if we can do an enterprise fund?
For curbside pickup. Correct.
So we would have two enterprise funds, one for the state, the transfer station, and one for curbside pickup.
That is correct.
I'll second that.
Okay, I'm afraid to ask for any more discussion.
No.
Okay, so we have a motion in a second for this RFP for enterprise.
Do we need to add a timeline to that?
I don't think so.
Do you want a timeline for that?
I advise that we have to, people like to apply how quickly and possibly, it's going to take a month. People are trying to make plans for January. I don't know if you're going to vote, but maybe you can make this system, so people put out a deposit relationship, and then just do a group stuff, 500 household.
Yeah.
And then if you get overpaid, do we get like a rebate?
A rebate.
Or something like that. So that's...
Those are detailed.
That's detailed.
But if you want to come up with a timeline, I'm always happy with it.
Yeah, I would prefer the committee to come up with a timeline.
We're going down the wrong lane.
Yeah, well...
We're going down, we had a motion in a second, now we're going into discussion, so...
And we have more discussion, so...
All right.
Good evening, council.
Mr. Gleason.
President, David Gleason, 63 messages I have here. Sounds like we've got to move forward with the whole curbside concept, but I just want to remind the council of what type of citizens we have as a whole. First off, in talking to Mr. Anteia, who doesn't want to come up here and speak tonight, when you look at the total of 7,161 families, and you say that we're heavily weighted on the curbside, there are a lot of families that live in apartment complexes.
I did not say that.
Excuse me?
Okay.
I did not say that.
Okay. So basically, it's, looks like it's around 50/50 split roughly between people that are using the station and curbside, because you can't use a number of 7,000 people, whatever you're using for total households, it's more like 6,000, because people are using, you know, they live in apartment complexes, condos or whatever, they don't use their own, they're not paying out a personal check every month for their services. And looking at some of the haulers today, they're anywhere from, $39 was a haul that called me back today, and they're all anticipate to go up. So essentially, somebody using the compact station and spends $100 in bags a year is going to pay $280 versus somebody that's going to pay $480 to $500 roughly. Now, most of those people that are using the curbside are probably more capable of paying that money. They're not going to miss that $200. The point I'm trying to make is that the transfer station has been for people that are less well-off, if you will. I know we have councils here that they don't want to put the trash in their enclosed vehicle and drive it to the compact station. That's the price that some people are paying to be, in order to save that $200 per year. So I just don't think we should lose sight of that. And, you know, there's a purpose for the transfer station now, and do the campaign last year to move more people away, we've gotten ourselves in this predicament. So my plea to anybody that's listening is to consider coming back to the transfer station, because your curbside pickup rates are going to go up, the same as our rates are going up.
It's, you're absolutely right, Mr. Gleason, and, but I don't think any of us know, we'll see with the new sticker price, if we do get some folks back. But I, I mean, I use the transfer station, I've used it for a long time, but there becomes that balance point where, you know, if we're paying the same amount of money for transfer station than curbside, if we keep losing folks on the transfer station, it's just, it's going to be too much of a burden for anybody trying to purchase it.
Sure.
So I like the way we're heading towards some additional studies, let's see what the recommendations are, and hopefully, maybe we do get more people coming back to the transfer station. I don't, I don't know.
Absolutely. I mean, the only thing you could say is that we've just put $150,000 into a new RAM, we've put new siding on the building.
Understood.
To try and just close this right away, I mean...
Nobody's not closing that.
No, no, we still have two years.
We're fortunate that there is two and a half, two years left on the contract, you know, and maybe it is the right way to go to curbside. I just...
I don't want to go down the rabbit hole.
Sure.
I, I agree with you, Mr. Gleason, which is why I, you know, the first motion that I made was to look at putting it back in our tax rolls, because I don't like the idea of charging people $180 for a sticker.
Sure.
And looking, just looking at this, we're going to be paying the bond on the new compactor until 2026, so it's, you know, I think, we are invested in the transfer station, and I think it would be interesting to just look at more creative solutions, because, you know, I will add to what you said, that even when private contractors here in town were charging $72 a month, that there are some families that can afford to pay the dollars, but just don't have the time to go to the transfer station during the week, and so you pay it. And I think we can balance out and give those families a better, you know, a better option while making life easier for those that want to use the transfer station, and that's my ultimate goal here.
Sounds good.
Mr. President, I may have one remark. I think it's important to note that the suggestion was just made that somehow someone has suggested we are rushing to close the transfer station. I think it's important that that falsehood is denied in public, because no one on this council said that, no one on this council is working towards that, and in fact, we're all on board with engaging in a long-term study to determine what our options are, including putting it into the tax rolls where it belongs. And one final remark, that there are people who can afford the transfer station costs, but are unable to physically load their cars up and unload it at the transfer station. It could be young people with disabilities or elderly people who are elderly.
Understood.
Thank you.
Thank you. So I believe we had a motion in a second.
Motion in a second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes seven to zero. Okay. We're going on to new business number four, assignment of town council liaisons to town committees, and I did a little bit of homework.
Yeah, no, I just put this on the agenda, because I really think it's important for the town council to reach out to the various committees and act as true liaisons to understand what they're doing, but also to offer help and guidance, which I think has been somewhat lacking. And so my main motion tonight would be that people think about it till the next meeting and be prepared to offer, you know, do some research and pick the two or three committees that they would like to be liaisons with the following meeting.
Can we pick one?
Or one, or one, some are very, very...
There are about 20, so we definitely need to diversify.
Yeah, I would like to be liaison to Conservation Commission, if I can put that in there.
Right, right.
Let's, I agree.
Can't we just roll down through these 20 real quick?
Can we just go down now?
I got them ready.
Also, you know...
Oh, I didn't think you were ready.
On behalf of Mr. Kelly, he's not going to be here at the next meeting, so...
Okay, I'm sorry, I thought people would not be ready.
I was, I was ready to go.
I wouldn't want to be short-changed, if there's something he's really hunkering to do.
All right, so...
And if we have any that don't have takers, how about we leave that till the next meeting?
Okay.
I may just, no, I may just assign it.
All right.
All right. Now, first item, well, we've got some big shoes to fill here. So first, first one is the Agriculture Committee, we need a new liaison for that.
I'll do that.
And then for the Aquinic Island Planning Commission, that was previously, Linda, that was you?
I'll do that.
Okay.
I wish I had led to do all of them.
The next one is the Bristol Ferry Town Common, that was...
I'd actually like to take that one.
Okay.
I don't even think that meets anymore.
Yes, it does, we just appointed three people.
I know, but...
Well, if they don't meet, that would be information we would find to know.
All right, the next one we have is the Citizens Interested Comprehensive Plan, we need at least one member.
I'll take, I'll take that.
Mr. Hamilton, thank you. Conservation Commission?
I'll take that.
The Dog Park Operating Committee?
Lynn, I'll take care of the dog park. I love Buddy.
Okay. Economic Development, that was previously Mark and I. I know I was very delinquent in meetings, but it's something I will make an effort, I will still go.
Okay, I'll be there.
It's up to you?
I'm out.
All right. Glen Manor House, we need two, or we had two previously. Linda was one.
I would, I would be in second, as I served on it for five years.
Okay. Glen Park Working Committee?
I'll do that.
The Harbor Commission, we had two previous liaisons, so I don't know if we need two or at least one.
I'll work with the Harbor Commission, that gives me three, right? I'm done. I'm out.
Oh, I didn't know that was how it was going to go. Lower Glen Park?
I'll take that.
That kind of goes with Glen Park, so...
Yeah, I'll take the Glen ones.
Melville Park?
I'm out.
We're going to start defaulting. Melville Park, that was myself, Mr. Hamilton, but, I mean, I can handle that one. Newport Chamber of Commerce?
I'll do that.
Okay. The Pension Investment Committee, two people?
I'd actually like to take that one, which is okay, I'm kind of, you know, stepping out.
And Linda?
I think by charter, it's supposed to be the president.
All right, I was going to, all right, so, all right, I'll, I'll jump on that. So it's Keith and I. Portsmouth Senior Center was...
That was me.
Linda previously?
Yeah, I'll do that.
School Committee?
I would very much like to be the liaison to the school.
Actually, we have a note that said, "For you not."
I'll still go in the meetings.
I'd like to be the liaison to that as well.
Well, you were, you were on it before, right? And then, so Andrew, sorry, any takers for the Solid Waste and Recycling?
I guess I should probably, no, you going to do that?
We had two, we had two. So Len, Mark.
All right. Both of us. Len and Mark.
Tank Farm Advisory Committee? But Mark's already overcommitted himself.
I'll, I'll be on that.
Len? Okay. And then the Tree Commission?
I hate trees.
I, Keith, that last, I'll do it, I'll take, I'll take on trees.
Hooray for trees.
The only other one, and I don't know if we want to have a liaison for that, it comes up further on in Mr. Ryan's agenda item, is whether or not we should have a liaison for the Charter Review Commission.
Don't believe we can do that.
Let's, let's impanel it first.
Did we have one last time?
Yes.
I think we did.
But it doesn't exist yet, so let's wait.
Okay, I guess motion to...
Approve all the liaisons?
Approve all the liaisons.
Second.
But, yeah, with discussion, I just want to make sure that people feel that, you know, they will communicate, and maybe we should spend some time looking at these committees, because there are issues that I feel like we need to address, maybe not now, but after you get a chance to find out what's going on with them, including what their mission is and what priorities they have.
What nights they meet.
Right, and, you know, number of people who are on it, et cetera. I think I came up with a motion a year and a half ago for us to get a more significant report on what the committees are doing, and, you know, Mr. Raynard is collecting information right now, but it feels like it's only going to be in conversation that we really get to know what's happening on the committees, and so I, I think in a couple months, I'd like to circle back and make sure that people are prepared to talk about what's happening in the committee, so we can do a review of them.
Maybe those reports should come from the liaisons.
Right.
I think should come from the chairs of the various committees. The purpose of a liaison, as I understand it, is to provide some guidance to each of these committees on what council...
Not report back to the town council?
No.
No. It's really to sit and listen, and if asked a question, give an opinion, but not to be the direction of the committee. The committee is supposed to take their own...
Yeah.
...direction, so...
With town council guidance, so, and not, not liaison guidance, but town council guidance.
Correct, yes.
Maybe this needs further discussion. Needs further discussion.
Where the committee chair comes back and says, hey, we as a committee were looking at doing this, and then if the liaison wants to chime in and say, I was at that meeting and this is what I thought the discussion was going around towards, that's why I asked them to come here.
Because they single, or even two council members can't be out of committee and tell the committee what the council might do, because it's just too...
No, I meant report back the other way, where we can communicate with each other as to what's going on in the committees.
Oh, sure.
Just for information purposes, I thought that was the role.
So from council to committee, we can communicate.
So we had a motion.
Second.
And second for the council liaison. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes seven to zero.
Could I ask the clerk to email that out to everybody?
Please.
To list out to us, so we all know who's who. Of course, I didn't write it down, to be honest.
Okay, and...
I was trying really, really hard to write it all down.
Okay.
So next, on to new business number five, it's request, request approval of post-school committee selection process.
Right, I attached a backup that's pretty self-explanatory, but the main thing is, I would like the clerk to be able to start soliciting applications for the two openings on the school committee as soon as possible, and invite qualified people to apply. I have in my, I'd like to change what I put in my backup, because I've spoken to people on the school committee, and one of the reasons I rushed it is I thought that they were eligible to be in a training session, January 4th and 5th, but it appears that's not going to be possible. So my backup says, ask the town clerk to solicit in newspaper ads, whatever, for people to apply as soon as possible, and I'd like to change it so that they have to apply by December 31st. And then, after that, I'd like to change the date from us actually selecting someone to maybe the first or second, first meeting in January. And so, other than that, I would also like to say that the notice should have, that people submit not only a resume, but a cover letter that addresses three things, which is why they would like to serve on the Portsmouth School Committee, why they would make a good Portsmouth School Committee member, and what would be their major goals. And so, resume, cover letter with those three issues, and then at the January meeting, so that we mimic in some ways the kind of forums that we held for candidates who ran, I would propose that we have folks come who are interested to a regular meeting of the town council to answer questions that we propose to them, in a way that each of them answers the same questions, and, but they don't get to hear what the people before them are answering. Do you know what I'm saying? So just an opportunity for us to hear people address questions.
In a council, in a...
In a town council meeting.[1689.44] In a Town Council meeting. So.
They did it in Newport.
Yeah, I mean, the method I'm proposing, which again is in this backup, is to make the process more open, and to get the biggest pool of qualified candidates that we can to fill these two spots, given how important those positions are.
Mr. Kelly?
I agree 100% with Councilwoman Ujafusa. I also would just like to raise a proposal to have people background checked. And the reason I raise that is because we're filling two very critical positions that normally would be filled by the voters, and because the voters in District 71 were misled once before, and elected somebody with a criminal record in the state of Massachusetts unbeknownst to them, I feel like I don't wanna be the person to appoint somebody with a criminal background to the school committee.
Can I ask you a question? Did you have a criminal background checked on you for the school committee?
Nope, but I was elected.
I.
Not appointed.
Yeah.
Remember, we're gonna be held accountable for the people.
If I could talk to that point, Mr. President, as I understand your suggestion, Mr. Kelly, it is that the voters are free to choose whoever they choose, with the knowledge that is available to them, and then if that turns out to be a bad choice, that's, the voters made that choice. We're not the voters, we're a seven-member council, where we will be responsible for hopefully appointing excellent and qualified people. I don't have an objection to a background check.
I'll add to that, I mean, I've had to do a background check so far this year to be a volunteer at my kid's school, to lead my Girl Scout troop, and to coach a robotics team, so I think asking somebody for a background check is, I don't know, pretty basic, so I would support that.
I don't know how expensive it is for us to do that, and I'm not.
Five dollars.
Oh, well then, never mind.
Okay, so we have.
If it's a five-dollar check, it's not very extensive.
Yeah, I should correct that.
I could tell you my background check comes out on somebody in Wisconsin.
A five-dollar background check is the in-state background check, I think a more comprehensive one, I don't know what it would be.
The five, it's not a lot of money.
Okay.
Okay, and so I would, I would like to make a motion that you approve my proposed motion that's in the backup with the date changes to December 30th and first meeting in January, and that, I think I said that I'd like to have them make just a two-minute statement in front of the Town Council on an issue of their choosing, but I'm not sure if you all would prefer that they just answer a question that we could pick, or two questions that we could just pick that night.
I think a two-minute statement is.
Yeah, I'm okay with a statement.
You can't.
Okay, it's just too long.
You never know who's gonna show up.
Okay.
You might, with a background check, you may only get two people signed up.
Well, that's fine.
Personally, I'm thinking if we're gonna require candidates to get a background check, I think we should all have a background check.
Sure.
And so should all the school committee members.
I've had a background check.
I mean, that's, I, I think it's ridiculous that we're gonna ask for a background check, but, no more.
If I could ask a question, just wanna clarify, on your dates and time frames, you're suggesting that qualified electors apply by December 30th?
Yes.
Okay, and then that we would have a meeting, our first meeting in January?
Right, by the first meeting in January, we would have had a chance to look at all their resumes and their cover letters, and that they would appear at our first meeting to just make a statement in public.
I would second that motion. With the background check?
Yes, I guess.
So.
That's the motion.
That our first meeting in January is January 7th?
7th, yeah.
Yeah, and the 30th is a Saturday.
Well, let's.
So it's, they're gonna get, excuse me, it's Sunday. So they're really, are we open on the 31st, or half-day?
14th, first meeting will be the 14th.
14th.
So we will have time?
No, 15th, excuse me, is it 14th, Martin Luther King Day?
No, I think it's the following weekend.
21st, so, okay. So the 14th will be our first meeting, because it's the second Monday.
Okay.
All right, so the one that says a future meeting series is wrong. Sorry, what's on the agenda?
But that just gives the clerk enough time.
Okay, I just wanna make sure we have enough time.
Does that give the clerk enough time to post them all?
The 14th does.
The 14th does, the 7th.
Is our agenda incorrect, which says our meetings in January are the 7th and 21st?
Yes, it's incorrect, it's incorrect.
Yeah, the 21st is Martin Luther.
The issue, the issue you will have is that the first meeting of the school committee will be on the 8th, so they will go to potentially a meeting with only five members.
Is that a problem?
Seven, four.
Or would you like?
Yes.
Portsmouth School Committee. Thank you all for putting a lot of thought into this. Obviously, the school committee members in the room think it's an important couple of positions, so we really appreciate you doing your due diligence. I, the process you set up is yours, I think from our perspective, sooner than later, would be better, because while they won't do the fourth and the fifth training, we are entering into budget season, we are entering into the NEA negotiations, and it's not probably a good idea to really get very far down that road without a full committee. So I guess my question would be, is, could we perhaps move it up a little bit? I don't know if you need three, four weeks to have people submit their applications, but if, you know, you maybe give them two weeks, so that, you know, you'd have them by mid-December, and hopefully you'd be able to appoint at your first meeting in January?
That is our first meeting.
The 7th, is what I hear?
No.
No, the 14th is our first meeting.
Your last meeting in December is the 26th, I believe?
That we typically don't have.
Yeah, we typically don't.
Specifically.
Oh, you don't have one? Okay, so we're really looking at 14th.
Traditionally, we haven't had one. It doesn't mean we can't have one. And if we have it, maybe we just have it for that particular item.
Maybe you could have a special workshop meeting or appointment? The other thing I would just point out is that it ought to be made clear to people that our meetings are every, you know, second and fourth Tuesdays, that they need to be able to attend that, and if people wanna reach out to any existing school committee member with questions about what's involved, I'm sure we'd all be happy to do that, or if you'd like a little word about what's all involved, I'm sure we can get the superintendent to send over that to when you announce.
Maybe, that would be super helpful, actually.
I think the other thing that needs to be abundantly clear in the advertisement, and the appointment, is for the two, remaining two years of the term that was elected for Mr. Kelly and Ms. Courtman.
Right. Maybe, maybe so we don't pay a ton of money for, I don't know how much it costs to put an ad in, but maybe we could just have an ad a lot, right? But if we could, so we don't make it a really big ad, could we just have a link to all the information that they would need? That's your call. Anna could put something like. I'm sure we could give you a description of what the, on the school committee involves, and then however you choose to, you know, post that and announce it would be your choice. Okay. So I guess I'd amend my motion to say that, that we would link to a school committee, I don't know. No, I think you would put a link on your own. That's what I mean.
I don't think you need to amend the motion.
No, we have the motion.
Those logistics and details could be had by the clerk.
I guess the only question is, can you move it up a bit? Yes, yes, so what's the date? Instead of December 31st, for the due date of the applications, if the notice goes out in the next day or two, how about?
We would have to have the applications back by, my easiest would be the 14th, that Friday.
December.
That'd allow the.
It's a good two weeks.
That'll allow the clerk to pull it together, and then we would have to have a meeting on the 26th, because I don't think anybody wants to be here on Christmas Eve or Christmas Day.
And we're not, are we meeting on the 26th for what?
That's up to the council.
I don't think it would be fair, though, to ask people to come in for interviews on the 26th.
Yeah, nobody applying would wanna come.
Right, that's a great point, so.
Who can have a special meeting on the 2nd of January?
Or, you know, 3rd or 4th, or whatever.
You can have a meeting on the 27th if you wanted to, but it's tough, because there could be people who.
A lot of people travel.
Vacation.
Anytime after January 1st, people are back at work.
I mean, if the clerk gets them by the 14th, we get, and they can pull the packages together, we can have a meeting on the 19th, just have a special meeting the week before.
And your first meeting's the 8th?
Yes.
Of January.
Of January.
Yes, that's the second Tuesday.
Curious, how long does it take to get a background check done?
Couple days.
If you go to the AG's office in person, it's at the same time?
No, no, it's a BCI. Five minutes for a BCI.
Yeah. So. Where do they have to go to get it now?
They have to.
Can they do it with you guys? Well, you gotta get a waiver, you either go to the AG's office in Cranston to do it?
No, no, well.
I just did one last week. No, they're not doing it in Providence anymore.
They spent $30,000.
So they're doing it in Cranston, but they can give you a wa.
Hold on, we're going down the road.
They can give the police department a waiver to do it.
Maybe the, maybe as a suggestion, you might just say that for the two candidates who you select, they pass the background check. That way they can do it after you've selected them.
That's true, that's better.
Thank you for talking.
So.
Yes, so I'll amend that, so that not all applicants have to get a background check, only the people that we select.
Yep.
Okay.
So, I just, I just wanna go back through the dates to make sure we have enough time. So, if the applications were due by the December 14th, do we have time, does that have to be an official, it has to be an official council meeting?
No.
We have a specific meeting just for that purpose, on the 19th.
Single agenda item, yeah.
And, or we can do it on the 17th technically, but if everybody wants a couple of days to review.
Yeah. Be the 19th.
17th might be better.
17th on a Monday.
Also, the 14th, the mail may come after the offices close, offices close at 2:30 on Fridays at the Town Hall.
So.
Which means we might not see them till the 17th.
Correct.
So.
Which gives you the two days to do them, if you do it on the 19th.
Yep, okay.
I'm okay with that. And that's before Christmas break, before everybody goes away? If there's people who have.
So they would be due on the 14th, and we would have a special Town Council meeting for meeting the candidates on December?
19th.
19th.
No meeting on the 26th.
And no meeting on the 26th. And would you then be appointing them on the 19th?
Yes.
Yes. And does a swearing-in happen immediately? I hope it can.
Good.
Wait, how, then how are we gonna select the top two or three?
At the meeting on the 19th, we will vote.
But we can't swear them in, because of what we're doing.
Subject to background check.
We can't swear them in. The clerk swears them in anyway, so it doesn't matter.
We don't need to be present.
The clerk could be sworn in, they could be sworn in right before our school committee meeting, then by the clerk.
They could be sworn in as soon as their background check is done, they can come up to the Town Clerk's office and raise their right hand.
Okay.
The important thing is that we.
That's.
Andrew.
Alan did that, that's right.
We get to the 19th. That's the important thing. We get to the 19th, and we.
7:00 PM on the 19th?
Let's do the 26th.
It's majority, my friend.
Because I'm not the president on that.
Yeah, it's not fair to people who might wanna apply and not, and already have a trip booked to Disney or somewhere.
I'll be home. February, early January, to be quite honest, but.
I know.
The school committee has too much work to do for early January.
It's our busy time, so I, we really appreciate that.
Okay.
And there's still a chance they can go to that training if we have. Well, that's what I'm gonna check, because they've said that, it is on the 4th and the 5th, and newly appointed people go, so if we can get them sworn in beforehand, I don't see why not, and we could just register to placeholders potentially. Okay.
Okay.
Now, that's not School Committee 101, though, that's the New Leaders Conference.
New Leaders Conference at Wright.
Yeah, and they're calling it also School Committee 101, though, too, in the announcement I saw today. They're calling it both.
Oh, interesting.
Okay, more rooms.
It's sponsored by the Hassan Delance Institute, the local trust, and the school committees. No, it's not local trust.
Are you revising your dates?
Yes, so I'm revising the dates to be that the applications are due by December 14th, that we will have a special meeting on December 19th, is that right?
Yes.
At 7:00 PM, I guess here in Town Hall.
Yes.
And at that point, we will vote on selecting the two people, but they will be background checked and sworn in following that.
Second.
Motion's been made in second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
I'm only opposing because I'm opposed to the background check, because we don't have background checks for ourselves.
And who do you want the blur sent to?
Six to one.
Clerk's office.
Clerk?
Motion passes.
J. West at PortsmouthRI.com. Is Jen gonna be back tomorrow?
Okay.
Send it to me.
We all sent it to you, sorry about that.
Clerk's office at PortsmouthRI, so then we all get it.
Alan Scherz, Court of Roger Williams Court, just would like to make a few quick observations about the school committee, okay, as you're reviewing these coming up. One, we're a very cohesive group right now, we're working very well, and I think that should be taken into consideration, that as we make our decisions and that, and certainly that's something for you to consider. No activists, no ideologues, no political pariahs, and these positions are very important, and the goal for every one of us should be the kids, so I just thought I'd bring that out as you go along, and you cut through everything, that's it.
Thank you, Mr. Scherz.
Thank you, Mr. Scherz. Okay, the next item we have on our agenda is.
Professional development?
Nope, yeah, a request for Town Council to adopt procedures for professional development.
Right, so, again, because as Mr. Scherz points out, you're such a high-functioning committee, we thought we should mimic what you do as far as professional training. I don't know why the school committees are required under state legislation to have professional training, but Town Council, six hours, but Town Councils are not, seems that, especially in light of the fact that it will help us make better decisions, we're gonna avoid unnecessarily costing taxpayers money, and it's, you know, avoiding litigation as well, just a lot of reasons. I would make a motion that the Town Council, our Portsmouth Town Council, receive professional training, and I propose that we have the Town Administrator make arrangements for that educational development, and that we be required to attend.
Discussion?
How much is this gonna cost us, and is it in the budget?
It is apparent, Mr. Rayner has been looking into it, and I'll let you describe the details, Mr. Rayner. You may not speak.
Yeah, this, I can't speak to the exact training that the school committee does, but I can speak to this one-on-one type of training, and this is, can be done by the school solicitor, it would be $1,500, and we have that in our legal line in the budget.
Mr. Rayner, so, I mean, what, what would the framework of the program, would it be like on a Saturday, is it in the evening?
Yes, what she's proposing, she's available, Saturday, December 8th, in the morning, for a, we'd call it a scheduled retreat, of course, this would be subject to the Open Meetings Act, we can either do it here in chambers, or the school has offered up the high school library.
Library. That's us.
So, okay, just bear with me one second.
So this would be essentially, you know, they're calling School Committee 101, this is Town Council 101, and we think that'd be a good idea for, we have a lot of new members, returning members of the council, just a way to start things off on the right foot.
I'm uncomfortable spending $1,500 if I don't know what we're gonna get for our, there's nothing in front of me that tells me what we're gonna get, $1,500 bucks.
Well, the top. The topics would track the kind of education that's required under the state law for this school committee, it would include instruction in labor and labor relations, negotiating collective bargaining agreements, et cetera, you can see it in the backup. Tailored to the town, we wouldn't be doing educational standards, but.
That's what you're saying it is, what I'm asking is what is she offering?
That's what we're asking her to offer.
Okay.
I've attended this as a school committee member, school committee specific, and she also did this in conjunction with another lawyer for the City of Newport School Committee, a couple of years ago, or last year, for their new members, it was highly publicized and well-received, it's open meetings laws, it's access to public records, it's Town Council, this one will be chartered, there'll be some charter-specific, I'm sure, and it's in a PowerPoint, and it's been presented in a very good manner. She's done a very good job, she's very professional.
I just wanna add in that I have long said that, the core value of mine, that education is the foundation of democracy, and education doesn't end after high school, I think that we can all benefit from it, so I will support this.
I'm just trying to figure out, does it, does it also tie into the next item? Maybe it doesn't, maybe it does.
I think it's a separate item.
Yeah.
Just because I don't think that that second item is going to be able to be done all in the same day that we have Town Council 101. So I guess we'll clear this up first, and have a motion to have us attend professional development.
How long is the training?
Mr. Rayner, I believe it was.
Just about an hour and a half on a Saturday morning.
Is that similar to what Bryant is offering?
No.
No, it's different.
Being a catered specific.
Has she reviewed our charter? Does anybody know?
Yes, I've talked to her, she's reviewed our charter, she'll develop packets specific to the town of Portsmouth, she has done this for other towns, so she's familiar with this type of training.
I mean, I do see the benefit of making sure that we're, at least on the same page with Open Meetings Act, certain things, how to run the meetings.
About ethics issues?
Ethics issues.
Ethics issues?
That is covered at the Bryant event, as well.
The $1,500 would cover the entire council, correct?
I mean, it's subject to open meetings laws, so anybody in the public would also come and watch.
And I don't think that this replaces, I think we should still reach out to for. Yeah, and I don't think that this replaces, I think we should still reach out to, for example, the Rhode Island Ethics Commission, who has an individual tasked with coming to meetings like ours and giving us the Ethics Commission 101 and all those.
We do that for each council. We do have the ethics people come in and promote training.
Jason comes in.
Yeah, I mean, I don't know. I mean, if you think, well, so we could vote on this first and possibly do the second one in the same day if you have the stamina.
Happy what?
Stamina. Stamina.
Two and a half, three hours?
Maybe four.
Why don't we approve this one first?
Yes.
Well, Mr. Rayner just said it's an hour and a half for the 101.
Yeah, so you stay five hours and do the retreat too?
Whoa.
Well, that's a long
That's a long time on a Saturday morning.
I'm on the school committee, we did it all the time.
He's going to be in the Philippines, what does he care?
Yeah.
He's going to be on a plane.
Oh, he's like, by the way, I'll be on vacation. Yeah, great, thanks.
All right, so, so that being the case, if Mr. Kelly's not going to be here, why do it on the 8th?
Will he be here, right?
I won't know.
Would you like us to change the date, Mr. Kelly?
I'm not opposed to you guys having it without me. I've been through a similar program, but, I mean, I love a refresher, but I've been through a similar program. And I was planning on having the Town Administrator try to Skype me in, so
Oh.
That should work.
Okay. And they'll get the packet.
I have it in access. I was planning on getting it.
All right, is there any more discussion on this? So we have a motion.
Second.
Do we have a second?
I seconded.
Okay. So we have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
I'm opposed to spending $1,500 to do it when there's two meetings in January that are capable of doing the same information. One being the event at Bryant, and also the annual Rhode Island Legal Cities and Towns Conference.
I don't believe they'll cover the same information.
The motion passed at six to one.
Okay.
And I also hope that we are not going to be on a council that is going to continuously look for money to do projects outside of the budget process, because it is a finite budget, and they are specifically aligned to do certain things.
A point of order, Mr. President, I think we should keep to our agenda.
Well, yes, but I guess Mr. Hamilton's point is fair, that we just committed to some money that was outside of our original budget.
We were informed by our administrator it was available.
Okay, so our next item?
Oh, I have another, I was also covered under that agenda item. I have another motion to make.
What's that?
I was also covered under that agenda item. I had a different motion.
Okay.
Mr. President, I'd like to move that we engage with our General Assembly delegation, our four representatives and our senator, to hopefully introduce or support legislation similar to, sorry, just lost my agenda.
Would you like my computer?
Oh, similar to the planning board?
Nope.
Similar to the professional development?
Yes.
16-2-5-1.
Yeah, similar legislation to 16-2-5-1, professional development for Town Councils and City Councils.
Okay, so what is the cost every year for the school, for the school committee to go to professional development?
I think it just left.
I know. Mr. Kelly should know the answer, though. It's his agenda item, and he's been on the school committee for six years.
Well, we're, it's covered under an annual fee for membership for the entire school committee. I can't remember the exact one. But it's in conjunction with the Rhode Island Association of School Committees and Rhode Island College. They put on monthly professional developments and annual training conferences.
But we don't know the cost.
The school committee, well, they haven't created it yet. So the, the motion would be to have our General Assembly delegation look at legislation similar to that for Town Councils and City Councils. So they were not committing any money, Mr. Rayner?
You are committing money. You're going to commit money because the General Assembly is not going to put aside money to pay for this, so the Town Council is going to have to come up with the money to create another unfunded mandate.
Eventually, if they choose to pursue it.
So you're going to ask a committee, or a group of individuals, I'm not going to call them a committee, who get zero professional development at the State General Assembly to ensure that we have to get professional development?
Yes.
Okay.
I guess
Again, another unfunded mandate that you're requesting from the state.
In a $63 million budget, 15,000, or 1,500, excuse me, for professional development seems so unbelievably minuscule for the benefits that it's going to improve.
I hope so. But
I know so.
When, when the General Assembly gets a hold of things, it could be 10, 20, 30,000 dollars.
I think you're going, you know, it's, there's not a slippery slope in everything.
All right, so let's
Mr. President, if I may, I support the intent of the, of the motion. I'd be more comfortable voting on something when, with something a little more concrete. If we're passing a resolution on to our
Right, this is just to ask.
To our State House delegation, that it be a little bit more fleshed out in terms of, I understand completely what it is you're saying.
Oh, and hopefully the legislative agenda will be discussed at the retreat, because we need to get hopping on that.
We're just
Desperately late.
We're just asking the legislators to support this. They may not.
They may not.
Just to ask, okay.
Even if our four do.
Okay, well, we're just, we're just going to ask.
So I would, I would move to table this until such time as we come back with a more fully drafted proposal, resolution to give our legislators.
I would support that with the notion that we are going to have a legislative priorities meeting, and that this could just be discussed in that context.
So we have a motion to table it? Second?
Second.
So we have a motion to table this, this item. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes seven to zero. Okay, sorry about that, Mr. Kelly. I thought we were covered under the other
This one's
All right, so, so the next item would be this setting of priorities retreat, again, mimicking the school committee, who has this kind of public retreat, where they set up a strategic plan and goals for the superintendent. We would likewise be setting goals for our Town Administrator, which in the past has not been done, making it quite difficult to analyze whether we are achieving our strategic plan or goals. It, it would be a session, I guess, to make sure that we set forth, well, Mr. Rayner already has a list of priorities that he thinks needs to be executed, and the Town Council should work with him to make sure that those are, work together with the goals we set for him. So that's what the retreat would be. And I think, for example, if we're really concerned about the trash issue, where does that fit among all the issues we'd like Mr. Rayner to be working on? We need to prioritize those, because we can't do everything all at once, or he can't do everything all at once. And I think it's only, it goes towards transparency, it goes towards accountability for us to tell our Town Administrator what we'd like him to be working on, and in what priority. So that's what I'm proposing for this retreat. I guess I was thinking it could take three or four hours during a day, but perhaps it would be shorter, so I propose that the retreat be maybe the same day that we have the Town Council 101 meeting.
Start at nine o'clock on the 8th?
Yeah, I'd be okay with that.
Okay.
Is that a motion I can second it?
Yes.
And I think we should be prepared for three hours. I mean, we're talking about priorities for an entire year or longer. This could be a
Yes, priorities for Mr. Rayner, and also the legislative priorities that we'd want to be presenting to our state legislatures.
Great idea.
So pack lunch?
Yeah.
Pack lunch. So that's my motion.
Okay, so
So the 8th is going to be nine to whatever. Yep, essential.
Nine to two. Yeah, I second that.
Right, nine to two.
Be nine to two.
10, 11 o'clock at night.
Yes.
I believe Mr. Fitzmaurice has a comment?
I'll be there through the phone. Thank you, Mr. President, a question or a suggestion maybe. This retreat, as I understand it, has been discussed in a previous agenda item, is to be held in Portsmouth, correct?
Yes.
Either here or the library was discussed.
In a where?
Either here or the Portsmouth Public, Portsmouth High School library was discussed.
So that's good. Not all of the school committee's retreats were conducted inside this Town of Portsmouth, so I wanted to make sure that we're
Yes.
Doing this according to the rules, and this will be an open meeting, of course.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Fitzmaurice. So our retreat is for January?
Yes.
We have a motion in
January or December?
December.
December 8th.
Nice try.
December 8th, sorry about that.
2020.
Can't edit myself. We have a motion in the second, correct?
Yep.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes seven to zero. Did you want to
You know, it's now nine o'clock, and I feel like I'm prepared to move item eight to subsequent meeting, because I think it's part of a bigger discussion we need to have about communications to the town and from the town. And so I'm prepared to take this item off today's agenda and have it maybe even be discussed in our retreat.
I second that.
Okay.
Can I add my item number 12 to be addressed at the same time, because I think they're related?
Yes.
It's going to be a long day on the 8th.
Or maybe not the 8th, maybe whenever we pick it up.
Okay, I, I mean
Let's do number eight first, so we don't get
Yeah, let's do number eight. So we're going to, so we're going to have, so we need a motion to move item eight to our, our retreat date of December 8th?
Yes.
Second.
Motion's been made in second to move our request for discussion item number eight.
Just for housekeeping purposes, there was already a motion made seconded and thirded. So Mrs. Jufusa needs to take back her motion first.
No, it's okay, the motion stands and
Unless you're going to amend the motion.
To
I wouldn't
You have two motions doing the same thing. Yeah.
Ah, okay, well, the second motion was out of order, let's just go on the first motion.
First motion was Mr. Jufusa saying, I want to table this to the 8th, basically. I'm paraphrasing.
Yes.
So
Was there a second?
Yeah, there was a second.
It was a second.
Dr. Ryan, 30.
So we have a motion, it's been seconded, not sure what it is. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes seven to zero. All right, so now we're going to jump to number nine, request advertising for Charter Review Committee. Mr. Ryan?
That's basically it. I have a charter review to advertise to get people interested and volunteer, to be honest.
Okay, let's do it now while we have, we're already advertising for other stuff.
Exactly.
Absolutely. Is that a motion? So we have a motion?
Motion B.
Yep.
Make a motion.
I move that
This is not your first meeting.
No, no, it isn't. It's getting to be a long night. I move that we instruct or, I'd request the clerk to advertise to the Town of Portsmouth for interested citizens to volunteer for the Charter Review Committee.
Second.
Motion's been made in second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes seven to zero.
I think you can look back in, when did we do it, in 2011?
2011, 2011 slash 12.
Look back at 2011, you can get the wording, to make your life easier.
Okay, so on to number 10.
Mr. President, I draw your attention and the attention of the council members to the backup on this item. This was a business item that was adopted in 2005. A little bit of background, just very briefly, is that our charter in Section 210 actually states the Town Council shall adopt rules for its proceedings. In 2005, I asked the clerk if we had such rules. The answer was no, so we adopted Robert's Rules. And the phrasing is the most recent edition of Robert's Rules, ordered and early revised, which means that it is always the current version. So we don't need to take action on this. The council adopted these rules back in 2005, and the resolution stands unimpeded unless we're always, we can change it. Robert's Rules democratizes a council, because it provides knowable rules for council members to interact with the president and with each other. I'll point out that tonight, we're sort of vaguely evocative of Robert's Rules, but really not following it, which I would urge all of the council members and the council president and the town solicitor to become fluent in the basics of Robert's Rules, so that we can have a more orderly-run, efficient meeting. This is all about efficiency. And it's always the clerk's position to keep track of motions during, under Robert's Rules. So the president doesn't have to say, what was the motion? You can simply ask the clerk to repeat the motion, and that would be taken care of.
Sometimes it's easier said than done.
It is, but, but if the clerk frankly isn't, doesn't have it just right, that's important for us to know, so that we can correct it before we take a vote. So again, I don't think there's any action here, I just wanted to bring that forward body to encourage everyone to
It's really just discussion.
It's really just discussion. Mr. Kelly put it on, I believe, for action unaware that we had adopted these some time ago.
Upon doing a little bit of research, I found out that the, that what I put was not the current edition. We're actually on 11 and not 10.
That's because the Robert's Rules Foundation updates it every now and then, so their copyright stays active.
Sell more books. Okay.
We are on the 11th edition, just very basic.
If I may, Mr. President
Yes, absolutely.
Also on the council agenda, just for discussion, you'll notice it doesn't say discussion, action, because these rules were also adopted in 2005 and remain in effect. These are special rules of order, which amend, if you will, Robert's Rules. And these special rules are designed to articulate how a council member can place an item on the agenda, as well as a couple of other things. Very briefly for background, back when this was originally introduced, I pointed out that a long time ago, I was told it was during the 60s, there was an individual in town who was the head of the draft board, back when we had draft at the military, and that individual drafted the clerk into service, bullied the Town Council to appoint him as clerk, and then ran the council agenda unilaterally, and nobody wanted to go against the draft board. So to prevent, and to prevent any one person, either the town clerk or the town president, either maliciously or benignly, unilaterally acting to take things off the agenda, these rules make it clear that any Town Council member has an unfettered right to place an item on the agenda, and the clerk shall place it on the agenda if we give it to him. So it's, it's pretty straightforward. It goes on to address a lot of items about how a member of the public can also ask the clerk to place things on the agenda, and you can read, you can read for yourself. All of these things are important, these little items in here, like what if the president and the vice president aren't present? Well, then there's a process now for how we select the presiding person. But again, just for discussion purposes, I put this on the agenda to let every council member know that we each have an individual right to put items on the agenda, and no one person, such as the clerk or the president or the Town Administrator, can remove that item.
Nobody was shy about putting items on the agenda this time.
I'm sure they weren't. I'm sure they weren't.
The only, the only, I don't want to say it's an issue. The only thing I have, I would refrain from the word unfettered. It should be with clarification between Mr. Rayner, maybe the solicitor, to make sure It should be with clarification between Mr. Rayner and maybe the solicitor to make sure that the agenda item's not gonna get us in hot water.
Naturally, so...
I, I get your point.
Yeah, I get your point.
Point's taken, so we can move on?
We can. Thank you, Mr. President.
No, thank you, Ms. Kelly. So now, next item, number twelve?
Well, I guess I'll do the discussion part if you want, and we can leave the action to when we discuss it within context of our discussion of communications that we're having on the 8th, but I've, if you recall, when we had our forum, candidate forum here, we did live stream our forum on Facebook, there were several people that watched it, I had a lot of people that reached out to me and said, oh, that was great to have it there to watch, could you guys do something like that for our town, your town council meetings as well? So I, I would like to have some discussion, or have Mr. Rayner look into, maybe, you know, I know we have our, all our meetings recorded already, but looking at different platforms on which we could broadcast to maybe capture a wider audience. And so, yeah, I would like to have Mr. Rayner maybe talk to staff about different options and possibilities for our video capabilities. But I can defer action to, after we discuss on the 8th. But open to discussion, if you think anybody wants to say anything.
Mr. Rayner, any thoughts?
Yeah, I've been thinking about this since I saw it added to the agenda. I think it's a great idea. I would approach this the way I've done a number of other issues that have been tasked to me, find an appropriate interested working group, membership, and work with them to come up with a recommendation for the council.
Mr. Pete?
I would like to advocate for live streaming, I do give a lot of respect to the community volunteers that man the camera, the unfortunate reality is, it's not real time, I think the town has the whole benefit from watching meetings in real time, and we've benefited maybe even the town close when they record the minutes and prepare the minutes, and we could get away from the video hosting fees that we pay unfortunately to host those videos, we could go to a free platform, we could save the town money, and that would be a great thing for everybody.
Excellent.
Mr. President?
Thank you, Mr. Pete.
I want to thank Mr. Pete and Councilmember Abbott for bringing this forward. I've long thought we should bring our technology into the twenty-first century. And it is, I, I count maybe ten people here, not including us and staff. There may be quite a few number of people who would enjoy or the opportunity to pay attention to what the council is doing, who simply cannot sit in a chair in the council chamber for three, four hours, a stint on any given Monday night. So I look forward to this discussion.
For the record, we got new chairs a couple of years ago.
We did, that's great, that was great.
And the price was right on those chairs, we had them for free. So, they're much more comfortable than they were about, you know, four years ago.
Big improvement.
Okay. So it's just, we're just having the discussion, it'll be continued? You wanna, you wanna move to...
Do you want an action to, for an ad hoc committee?
I know we're gonna do it anyway, so why don't you just make the motion?
That way we bring closure to this?
I would like to make a motion for Mr. Rayner to convene an ad hoc committee to address improvements to our live stream video capabilities for town council meetings.
Second.
Motion made second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes seven to zero. Thank you. On to correspondence.
Mr. President, I make a motion that we receive and place on file, correspondence one through four.
Second.
One through six.
Six.
One through six. Sorry, I folded the page over the wrong way, one through six.
All right, so we have a motion second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes seven to zero, thank you. Future meetings, so as we noted earlier, we have a meeting on the 10th.
Now, on the 8th?
I'm sorry, we have the meeting on the 8th.
Zero nine hundred.
The meeting on the 8th is at nine o'clock?
Zero nine hundred.
Two-ish.
Two P M cutoff.
Is there a preference that we do this, like I say, the school has offered up the school library, that's where we do the legislative meetings, it's a little more relaxed.
These chairs?
I would vote for the library, because this, this is awkward.
We can also just put a tables down here as well, but it's either way.
Let's do it at the library.
Library's fine.
Libraries come here.
Because they have the screen that goes down.
So we have a meeting on the 8th, the 10th?
Yeah.
The 19th?
Correct.
Correct.
And then January...
We need to make a motion to skip the 26th, if you wanna do that.
I make a motion to skip the 26th.
Just say second.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor of eliminating our meeting of December 26th?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes seven to zero.
I'd like to clarify that the meeting on the 19th, that's a, that's not a regular council meeting, that's a special meeting, that's a single agenda item for appointment of school committees.
Leave a second, leave room for paying our bills, even though we don't technically have to do that, but I would just leave the bills on it.
And possibly paying bills.
Then...
I just wanted to not be an open agenda.
I understand, either, either that or we have to make a motion to pay all or do unjust bills.
Yeah.
Just put the bills on it.
What were the January dates?
Fourteenth and the 28th.
Okay. January, and the meeting's the fourteenth to 28th. And then, that is it? Mr. President, I make a motion, we adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?